Tom, we're all set when you're ready.
Okay, follow the meeting to order.
Flag of United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, the God, liberty, justice, for all.
Any adjustments to the agenda? Anyone? Yeah, we'll move these guys up. Any else?
Most to approve.
Second.
I think we've already discussed, we'll take up the street design and construction with Lee J first, and maybe the transfer station issue afterwards. Roger, you here for that as well? Yeah, okay. Lee J. Is your mic on?
Yeah. Thank you for taking me out of order. So what we've done is, since I've been here...
So this just essentially eliminates the staff review, public hearing section if you got the letter from the engineer saying to meet the standards.
I thought when we redid all of that, I thought we were trying to get away from having to hire an engineer. Who was doing this before? Did they have to have an engineer do the design and the whole thing before? I'm trying to remember when we went through all of this because I know the one word that we were really stuck on was engineer, and trying to save money, people who just had the private road, with having to go out and hire an engineering firm to do all of that work. Roger, what do you think of this change? Because I know you were one of the ones who really...
Stepped up with a plate rush.
Yeah.
So we had talked about this a little bit. It looked like... I understand what he's trying to do. I understand what he wants.
Yes.
What is some of those...
So if we just changed that one word from "shell" to "may," Tom, what's the legal ramifications of those two words, "shell" and "may"? "May" means... Okay.
But all you're doing here is getting exempted, or trying to get an exemption from. So that's what you have to do to get the exemption. There's no "may" about it. If you want to be exempt from the process of public hearing and staff review, get yourself an engineer. I mean, we went out there on my road. I mean, proof subdivision back in 75, the road was there. I was the last house in. I was using the road forever, and they wanted to build a house on one of the lots in between. But we had to go through design and engineer and work for them to do that.
Why do we have to do that when the road has been there, as you said, forever?
Well...
I know there's a road that's been in for 25 years. There's been 70, 80, 90,000 pound trucks traveling over it regularly, and it's never moved. And now we need an engineer to tell us that road is good enough to travel.
That was some of the discussions we had, between that and not requiring people to bring already existing roads up to standard if they're going to attach to it and bring a new road in place. The new road's got to be up to standards, but we weren't... That was the big issue that we faced.
We weren't going to touch the existing.
Yeah, yeah.
I know a gentleman wants to put a building on his property. I just happened to run into him and talked to him today, and it sounds like the ordinance is telling him he's got to build a whole new driveway to get his other building in. And I don't know if he was correct, or if he was assuming what he heard, but I didn't think he should have to do that. And I know that driveway that's there has been there since I was a little kid, and it's moved in a few weeks.
Would you prefer for them to sort of work on some other language? Is the language a little ambiguous at this point? Or do you think it needs to ensure that Lee J be far more... As a matter of fact, I can have some discussions with him as well to see if we can come up with something that, if you feel it's a valid argument or an issue to maybe make some changes to this ordinance come special, come in Little Town meeting. So just my thoughts.
Well, I think it makes sense to get rid of the public hearing, public meeting, on some basis, if you've got an existing road. That doesn't make any sense, I mean, I don't think. That's a waste of time, your time and everybody else's time out there. But there ought to be some standing. Now, maybe that's an initial review by planner, Public Works or something like that, to see if there are issues that should be addressed by an engineer. And then if they want to go have an engineer do it, then they can avoid the process, otherwise they go through the process.
Yeah, I'm okay with public officials doing inspections, but we all know that it don't take long to spend a few thousand dollars on an engineer that, when you know you don't really need it, but yet they're going to send thousands of dollars. A lot of people, that's a burden for a lot of folks. If public officials, whether it be codes or Public Works, or either or both, look at it and inspect it, they're comfortable with it, they go with a few thousand dollars that some, somebody doesn't have to invest. That's kind of what I'm thinking of.
So with that said, can we eliminate part of the inspection, the 2.71? What's the sense of having consulting engineer? We're going to require developers to hire its own engineer. Why are we getting multiple engineers involved? Is there a need for it, I guess, at this point?
So 2.71 still applies to... I think somebody hired a second engineer. I don't have the full... For the rest of... That's the process.
Terry, you have a comment?
The only reason I brought that up is because it seems redundant. We're going to try to structure the road, have it on a, down below, put like a secondary consulting engineer. That's another one of those unforeseen costs that's going to get passed on to the developer. So is that... Yeah, isn't that what we just talked about? Public Works and Roads is going to turn the whole thing up, the whole thing, it's not... It isn't. When it's passed on, you've got to get an engineer. Why get a secondary engineer involved? I'm just bringing that up. It just seems like there's a shortage. I change why I mentioned it.
The only reason I brought that up is because...
Terry's point, maybe Roger can show up and know what's...
And they have the authority to get a consulting engineer to assist them in that evaluation if they think it's necessary, and the applicant pays for it.
Yeah, that goes back to what Phil was just talking about, unforeseen costs. It's like, if I sit down and try to build a budget for a road that I want to put in, I hire an engineer to design this road and do my lifts and everything, and then all of a sudden, I... The way I'm seeing it is I start the construction of this road, and Roger has to come out and inspect it. If he could mandate a secondary consulting engineer to inspect this...
So here, maybe you want to say instead of "applicant shall," maybe it's "may here" retain an engineer to certify. So you've already, you've done it in your circumstance.
Right, I'm already presenting you with the engineer plan. Why do I need to even...
Right. Give them the option. So what do you want to have this language massaged a little bit more?
Yes.
Okay. When we...
Yeah.
No, but this does uncomplicate it for some folks. I mean, it's what it comes down to. If they can get certification or convinced that Public Works... Yeah, yeah. Okay. Great. Thanks, Lee J.
Thank you.
And just as a side note, I did invite all of the past committee members to attend tonight to hear the discussion in the event that they needed to, to want to weigh in or hear what was going on. So...
Okay.
Just so you know.
Okay, so we want to take up the transfer station issue, Keith?
Sure.
Yes.
I had, I had provided you some information as part of, as part of an email that I sent you last week. And then today, or this past Friday, Dave Allen from Casella had sent me, or Thursday, sent me some information, which I didn't get until this morning when I, when I got to the office. So that is the new information that Casella has provided to me at this point, discussing part of our discussions with them a couple of weeks ago as to what we can do perhaps in modification to the operation at the transfer station to make it a little easier, as well as asking some specific questions on, in terms of eliminating the punch card system in the future and putting that burden of cost into the budget, into the transfer station budget, as opposed to having people purchase the punch cards. So there's several things that we wanted, would like to try to do here, and I just walked through the first of them. As you can see, they've, they've sort of massaged my initial thoughts in terms of eliminating the weighing of material at the transfer station. That seems to be a catch, a catch-up where they're either weighing it or not weighing it, and it becomes a burden. I think they're taking, they may be taking some guesses as to what people are disposing and how many punches that's worth, as opposed to weighing it. So Casella has sort of massaged that a little bit more in that they would like to eliminate the weighing of the material and for now keep the punch cards where for trash, a kitchen bag, or smaller would be one punch card, and a 30 gallon bag would be two, and then loose or unbagged estimated equivalent. So what they would do is they would provide one punch to loose trash that would show up, or at the discretion of the tenant, it may be two punches. So that's one of the proposals they're making. In terms of recycling, they would prefer to eliminate all bags, because what happens now is in the recycling, those plastic bags cannot go into the recycling bin. So they're saying a small 17 gallon bin of recyclables would be one punch. A large bin or a tote of some kind of recyclable material would be two punches, and then loose, unbagged, beyond that would be one punch, and then at discretion of the attendants. So that, that would be the first phase of changes that, that I think Casella, and to us to a certain degree, would like to, to see transpire at the transfer station, in order to create a better flow of resonance as they come through the, the station, and just eliminate the weight. So I think we just need to make a determination of exactly if we want to do that, and if we do, if the proposals that are being presented here are reasonable for us to move forward. Secondly, I asked them to provide to us, for our budget process, a cost that it would be for, for essentially for them to haul and to do the tonnage and present that cost to us, and we would add it into the transfer station budget. Essentially, it would do away with the, with the punch card system, and each resident would then have the ability to throw away their trash in the recycling at no cost to them as they get rid of that material. The only cost there would be, would be any other items, bulky items, appliances, things to that nature, as well as demo materials, that they would then have to be charged a fee as they do now, if they get rid of those. So essentially, I think 90% of the folks that go through the system, they had to get rid of their recyclables and their trash, and I asked them to provide us a cost for that. So right now, they're, as the, as the sheet says, they're estimating that cost to be somewhere between $230,000 and $250,000 per year, which would also include the attendance cost. So right now, our attendance cost is about $98,000, $98,000 to $99,000. So that would be as part of this system. And then lastly, I asked them to, to provide to us some cost associated with implementing a curbside collection system. And the curbside would be, in their view, anywhere between $350,000 and $400,000. And then in addition to that, we'd have to purchase, a one-time purchase of all the buckets or all the containers that they have. If you go by other communities, you'll see them on the side of the road, which is another $220,000 to $250,000 that we'd have available to our residents that we provide to them. So they're giving us a sort of three-pronged attack here in reference to what we'd like to do. So my thought is to, is to tackle number one, have a further discussion during the budget process. On number two, I'm not necessarily in favor of the dates that they've placed here, especially on two and three, but I think that's something we can discuss, and see where we're going to, going to go with, with the operation of the transfer station. It's certainly, it's a system that needs a little bit of massaging to look, make it more effective for everybody involved, as well as the, obviously, as well as the folks that are operating it. And lastly, on the back of it, they talked a little bit about the establishment of a gate, or the establishment of a, an area where prior to folks getting there, that they would stop, talk to a tenant, if they have a sticker, and they didn't have anything else that needed to be paid for, they could be waved through, and then they go get rid of their trash and recyclables. If they have something that needs to be paid for, that they pay for it prior to going up to dispose of it. So we don't have a confusion up there trying to gather money as people are moving in and out of the area trying to get rid of their trash. So we're debating, they would like to see some sort of gate building or fee building further down near the, the opening of the gate, and I, and I'm not sure that that's the right location for that, to, to conduct the operation. So we're still obviously debating that, discussing that. So, but I think primarily, tonight, I really would like to try to get an idea of where we want to go with, with the initial punch card system. I think what Dave said and what I provided in my memo to you earlier, pretty much the same. They're a little different in terms of size, but pretty accurate as to what a general resident would be bringing to the transfer station on a weekly basis to dispose of.
When you buy one of those punch cards, $40, does that money stay in the town's account? Or does that go in, I mean, the town's account for this?
The money goes directly to Casella.
Directly to Casella.
Correct.
All right.
So you're looking for us to decide whether we want to go to number one here, starting 1-1 next year?
Yeah, yeah, either, either 1-1 or sometime in the beginning of the, of this new year that we're coming in, that we eliminate the weight... Yeah, yeah, either, either 1-1 or sometime in the beginning of the, of this new year that we're coming in, that we eliminate the weight. And we'll have the attendance just punch the cards as we go through the system.
Box, anybody?
Roger.
If we stayed at, at number one, what will our cost, is our cost, no matter what, is going to increase to $250,000?
Uh, no, no, that would be a budget discussion that we'd be discussing whether or not we want to get to a point where, to eliminate the punch cards altogether and go to a, a free system where folks, well, not necessarily free, you're going to be paid for it in your taxes, but that essentially we would, you just go up and get rid of your trash and recyclables. And if you have bulky items, appliances, mattresses, that you'd have an extra cost for that. But essentially, all your trash and recycling you'd dispose of for no further cost to you at the transfer station.
Roger, you have something? In front of your doors?
No, I don't believe it's their, it's their thought of taking cash. I think that's something that we're still working with them. At our last discussion, as you know, they were looking at, you know, people are going to give us a check to pay for that demo. So there would be a, there would be a exchange of a check of some type. Yeah, maybe a credit card system. And it will really depend on where the gate or where the, the the building that somebody is going to be collecting money from is located. Because right now there's no way for them to swipe cards based on the location of, to, to get any internet connection. So that would be an issue that we would have to address with them at some point. And I don't know how we do that, other than if it's remotely or, or they run a, they run a, you know, we put a pole someplace and they run power to that into the building or something along those nature way. But I think right now, if we can get some support on doing away, obviously officially doing away with eliminating weight elimination and come up with this, you know, that way the attendants say, if you've got a bag of trash, boom, 30, 30 gallons or more, two punches. Oh, you got recycling, that's not quite a, a full load, so that's a punch. And if it's a full trash can or it would be two punches. And they would go, and everybody would go on their merry way. So.
So we have two 30 gallon trash bins?
That's four punches.
That's four, and they go up there full, that's four punches?
Four punches.
Okay.
Yep.
As I've just said, I mean, times I've been up there, sometimes they're weighing, sometimes they're not. They're weighing more now. But that's us, you know, that just takes time to weigh it. And then now he's weighing recyclables, you gotta weigh the container and then I mean, it is, takes too much time.
Yeah, I think it does too.
It just does. And when they didn't weigh, I was throwing my trash in. They didn't even take it from me. There's plenty of it in the bin. That's, yep.
Right.
That's fine.
You know, and as, as we expressed them, and as I, I indicated to you at the, at your last meeting when we discussed this, that Casella is well aware that they were, they were taking a significant loss financially on the fact that they weren't punching cards, they weren't getting the proper notification or proper amount. So I think with the, the proposal they've made, they've probably looked at that pretty hard, that this is going to cover their cost. And so it'll be up to their attendance to make sure that they administer it correctly. I'm sure that we'll have a, a plethora of complaints and concerns that will be expressed to us here in the office because now people are going to actually get charged for what they're disposing of. I mean, if I was going up there with three or four bags of trash every week and I was only getting punched twice, and now, now they're going to actually punch me for correctly, I think there'll be some concerns raised to that. But I think that's something that's easily can be explained to the folks.
So they had a 30 gallon bin, whether it's half full or whether it's full, it's two punches?
A 30 gallon bin of recyclables?
Recyclables.
Just as a large bin or tote or other would be two punch.
Okay.
So, and if, if the attendant looks in and it's only half of a large bin, they could consider that a small bin and behave it for one.
What are they gonna do with large pieces of cardboard? That's not going to go with a recycled bin.
Well, probably a discussion that we need, but I don't know what they're doing with it now. Do they, do they throw it into recycling? I think they have a separate.
They've got some separate container for that.
Yeah.
No.
So, yeah. Cardboard seems to be an issue everywhere. In terms of, some people break it down, some others don't. It's not flat, or it's flat. It takes up a lot of space. So we can address the cardboard issue too.
I'm just saying, if you had some big pieces, they're not going to go with any of the containers that you're talking about.
Right. So. Right. Right, you go up there with a handful of, of what are they going to charge you for it?
I know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can address that with them as well.
I think this is a better system than what we have now. I mean, some people get weighed, some people don't. This way, it's consistent.
Oh, what do you want to do about getting notice out so people aren't necessarily surprised when they go up?
Well, we, I already talked to, we're going to put out a newsletter here real quick.
Okay.
That's our thought. So we'll try to coordinate the newsletter distribution to the fact that we're making some changes. And I think what we'll just talk about will be the, the first, the item one changes. Because item two, and any further discussion on item three would certainly come during the budget process.
Jack, one question?
I'm sorry, Jack. Appreciate the comments, yep. Okay, so how do you want to leave this, Keith? Do you need a vote on this tonight? Is that what you're looking for?
I would, I would love to have a vote to eliminate the weight and to move forward with the, with the the punch card as expressed by Casella at this point.
Other than option one?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
There's a second?
I'll second that. I'd like to just add
Yeah, we're getting, we, I've already ordered through Edison Press the new stickers. So we're going to be issuing new stickers and we'll probably roll this all out at the same time. I, I don't think the January 1st is going to meet the date.
No.
In terms of, in terms of having new stickers and all that, but we will get there as we move forward. But yeah.
I'll make that part of my motion, that we also go along with the new residency stickers.
Quick question, what do we, what do we charge for demolition debris now?
Uh, it's 40, 45, $45 for a pickup truck load. And then it goes, if it's a truck and a half or something along that lines, it goes up. I didn't bring the thing, but they're telling us that the cost that we have now is extremely low. And that's something that we'll have to discuss as we move through this process.
If we ever go to number two, that cost, I think, is extremely high. If we ever go there. Yeah, I can fill it on top. We, we use 40 yard dumpsters when we demo a house. And it costs us between $600 and $700 for disposal. And then $200 for trucking.
Okay.
So that would be $4,000 for a 40 yard dumpster, a little bit much.
Yeah, we'll, we'll certainly, when we start working on those, I I guess I, I want to take this a little bit at a time. Because you know how, you know how change will be. Change will be very dramatic. For some, others, it will be okay, but.
As Jack points out, you're going to have a huge political issue there to deal with.
What's that?
As Jack's pointing out, you're going to have a huge political issue to deal with.
I, I.
Making part of the tax rolls.
I think, I think.
Sanford tried to do that, I remember, a number of years ago, and it didn't work out. But anyway, okay, we'll deal with it when we come to that.
Yeah, I think, I think we'll have probably a bunch of discussion between you folks as to whether or not we want to go that route. As well as the budget board when they start. And then whatever, whatever decisions are made, we'll, we'll move from there.
Okay. Okay, so I got a motion to, and made and seconded to change the procedures up at the transfer station to adopt basically what is noted here as number one trash on Mr. Ayers' email to Keith. Save for the date and with the addition of verification of residency on some basis. Any further discussion? All in favor of that?
Thank you much.
Okay, so we'll go back to the agenda. Starting with public forum, anybody have anything else, non-agenda items? No, Jack? Okay. Minutes of 7:13. All in favor? They are approved. Any senior board reports? Brought to, down to the draft of the special town meeting warrant with respect to demolition of the old town hall.
Yeah, specifically, the reason I put it on there is that I'd like to at least get a formal vote by the board as to the recommendation of, of appropriating $50,000 for fund balance for the demolition of the old town hall. We had a meeting with the budget board. Was it last week or the week before? And they approved the, the, the use of the funds. So really looking for some action there. And then what we would do is then get this into a formal document, probably at your next meeting in, in in January, and then get it publicized, put it out, and move on from it, get your signatures and move forward. But right now I just need to, if you're going to approve the 50,000 for fund balance in order to, to move forward with this project.
You need to correct in the greeting here.
Yep.
It's on the page above it, below it, right there, yep.
I think the clerk had already pointed that out to me.
Yeah. So you need a, a motion to?
Need some sort of formal vote from the board so then we can put it all together and then you folks can finally make, sign it and move on with it.
So the board of the board has moved forward, the special town meeting on the 14th, that's imposed by this, this warrant.
Yes.
Draft board article.
One second.
All in favor? Moving forward.
Thank you.
Okay, town council wants some raise.
Pete, I think I had provided to you in your executive summary, the request from Drummond and Woodson to adjust the hourly rate for general legal services performed by them from the $175 that they presently are charging us to $200 moving forward for the next fiscal year, or next calendar year, excuse me, which will start in January 1. Obviously, a $25 increase. Presently, we'd set aside, I think it's $30,000 for doing our legal services this past year. We spent about 11% of that, maybe 12%, around $4,500, $4,600 to date. Primarily, our legal costs have gone down because we're not in court or being sued on a constant basis. So I think we're sort of leveling off and getting back to a more, hopefully a more normal use of legal services as we move forward, you know, reviews of, of planning board, the ordinance changes and you know, any language things or any, any discussions that we need to, to keep us on the right path. So I'm not, I don't believe that $200 is unreasonable. I'd look at the other end of the table to tell me if $200 is a reasonable fee.
It's very reasonable, folks.
So you need a motion to increase that, to accept that rate increase? Or just a?
I think more of a, it, it's a budget item. We're just going to be charged, you know, $200 an hour instead of $175. And then there are other costs that are associated with it when, that, that those fees are adjusted. If, if they're using a paralegal, it's less. And so, so on and so forth. So, but if they use one of their real estate attorneys to provide us strong real estate opinion, then it may be a, a different cost associated with it. But it's well within the budget.
So that's just information?
That's the way I would describe it.
I think, I think the board should, you know, they've proposed a change in the rate increase. I mean, it's like sending an engagement letter. If I'm sending it out, I'm changing my rate, I think I need the client to say that's okay. I think I need the client to say that's okay. Of the, because we could say no and they say, well, why not do the legal services anymore? And we'd have to go out and find somebody else. So I think we probably should accept the proposal, I think, by motion.
Okay.
Yeah. All in favor? Go. Okay. It's a new business, development of a purchasing policy. Keith noted in his memo to us, we went back and forth, he and I, we came up with something finally. But I think what we're going to do is essentially present this first to the charter review committee to take a peek at and get their comments on it as, as well. But if anybody else on this board has any comments, I guess we're looking to see what they might be at this point.
Well, I have a question.
Yeah.
Under B, it says anticipated to be less than twenty-five thousand and under C, it says in excess of twenty-five thousand. What are you going to do with the amount exactly twenty-five thousand? You've covered.
I guess we could say twenty-five thousand dollars or more.
Okay.
But in C.
All right.
Good point. The other comments or suggestions?
It's a reasonable amount to be able to work with and do some stuff. Without like five thousand, can't do anything.
Well, I think B was, I think Keith's proposal here about, you know, not having to go through the formal bid process, but getting quotes nevertheless and taking a look at those before we move on, something that's under twenty-five can. But once you get up twenty-five or more, then we get into the more formal process.
Yeah.
So that would say in, in the amount of twenty-five thousand or more will require a formal.
Right. And then we included that emergency provision. So in those appropriate circumstances, this board would meet and make a finding that in fact emergency, we are in emergency circumstances and we need to expend funds to address the emergency. And we, if we do that, then the policies, the previous policies are waived.
And then finally, we also put in there a provision where if we, if we piggyback onto any county or state bid documents that they've sent out and we're getting like bid amounts, that we don't have to go out to bid for that.
So I, I can make Bellma's change and I'll get it to you Keith and we can circulate it to the other.
Charter review committee.
So they can, they can take a look at it and have.
Yep.
Their poke at it before the meeting. Okay, next is the proposed change to the holiday, June 13th as a floating holiday for our employees.
Yeah, I massaged that a little bit. Hopefully it, it becomes a little more clear. And I recognize the, the high, the, the floating holiday as June nineteenth, also referred to as Juneteenth. So, and the only other questions I had that I didn't necessarily want to put into the policy itself is that in, in my view, and it's the way I would administer it, you're not entitled to the floating holiday, June nineteenth, until June nineteenth comes and passes. So in essence, if you approve this tomorrow, people couldn't take their floating holiday until after it's, June nineteenth is here.
Okay.
So I didn't think that needed to be in the language.
I used the floating holiday, you could take it anytime. I mean, it says June nineteenth is a floating holiday, but that means that you can use any day and say, this is my June nineteenth floating holiday.
My interpretation of that would be if, would be that you would earn that June nineteenth. You couldn't take, you couldn't take Memorial Day, prior to Memorial Day. I think you can't take June nineteenth until June nineteenth gets here. That would be my view of it. Now that would be my administrative determination of it. I guess somebody could appeal that decision if they felt it was wrong. Or if you prefer, I can add language in here to identify that the floating holiday could be used at any time.
That's what we did. Your floating holiday could be used at any time.
Well, was the floating holiday designated because it was an actual holiday or was it a floating holiday because it was provided as a floating holiday?
A floating holiday could be used at any time.
Yeah, I think the distinction here is that we're linking it to June nineteenth and that's why I referenced it.
What it does though is it shortens up the period of time within which people can elect.
That is correct.
Okay, so you may, you may run into problems with that.
We, we, we may.
Yeah.
We may. I, I'm, I'm, I'm flexible either way. If you, if we're going to recognize June nineteenth as a floating holiday and you don't think it, this board doesn't think that I should put any restrictions on the use of it, that's fine with me. I, I have no objections to it. I'm just pointing it out that if I was administering it, that's what I would do. But you can say, Keith, you're wrong. That's been said before.
I don't see what the difference. You guys, for June nineteenth, June nineteenth, December thirty-first. It wouldn't go by the budget cycle. Just like, what's the difference?
Well, you'd earn it. They, you know, it's like, it's like, you know, the other ones are distinguished on a day. You know what I'm saying? You know? That's, that's why I was sort of making the distinction in my mind that you really haven't actually achieved it until the day comes and goes. And now it's in your bank. Now, if you want to take vacation sometime in August and you want to add that floating holiday to your vacation, you certainly can. That was my thought on it.
If you wait through June nineteenth, now you've got a whole year to take that day.
You have to the end of the year, yes.
End of the year.
That's what I asked.
You won't go the next June?
No.
Correct.
Thirty-one, as I think Keith said.
So in essence, you'd give the floating holiday, but they'd have what? About six months to use it?
To use it.
As I said, I'm not objectionable if you want to just make it as part of the holiday and use it anytime. As Bellma suggested, the floating holiday is a floating holiday.
Yeah.
Even though it's June nineteenth, it's a floating holiday. We're going to administer it.
Should be able to use it at any time, any time of the year.
The language doesn't say that, you know, and it's okay. But if I get the basis of the board thinks that I should use it or administer it as a floating holiday and not distinguish whether it's earned by the nineteenth or not, I can do that.
When does the state start? Because this was a recommendation that came in from the state. The state has added.
Right, they've already enacted it.
They've already enacted. So their employees can, will have next June nineteenth, state employees will have next June nineteenth.
Well, it falls on a, it falls on a week of, it falls on a weekend. So yeah, technically they probably get the Friday or the Monday.
On the day on, okay.
But we wanted to stay away from that because we didn't want to close for another day here in the office. That's why we didn't distinguish it as the nineteenth and distinguish it as a floating holiday.
Floating is floating, they should be able to take it anytime.
What's the rest of the board feel?
Dan said the same thing I said, so that's three.
Okay.
Sold.
What's that? His proxy vote?
Yeah.
That's fine. I, I'm not objectionable to what I, you know. Okay.
What Raj has.
No. Yeah, I get it.
True fault.
Just make it a floating holiday.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds like that's the consensus there.
All right, good. I can do that. Thank you. I will, I will retype this up and get it at your next meeting so you can formally approve it.
Okay. Okay, we have some warrants to approve, two of payroll and payable.
Come on.
All in favor? Sold. Anybody have any other business prior to adjournments?
Night. Thanks Raj. Thanks for coming.